Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 18th, 2023 meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. If you are able, please stand and say, uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes. Planning and zoning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning.
First item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action item. This is a public hearing and public comment will be allowed in just a moment. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the item before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Concindein, Senior Land Use Planner. The item this morning is PC 11-23. It's a request for a review and approval by Ryan Kuhl and USC Holdings LLC for an interim use permit to operate a classic car paint and bodywork business as a Level 2 home occupation in the agricultural district. The location address is 6298 197 Lane, Macon, Minnesota 56001. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. The applicant was present and available for questions. A member of the public questioned the status of the access to the property being a driveway or a township road. Township official slash planning commission member confirmed it was a township road. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 1123. The hearing will be recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 1123? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 1123? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 1123? If not, I will close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board?
No.
Not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. And now we will have the Sauer River Draft Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan status.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Scotts Asbury, Property and Water Resources. Quick update on the Los Sauer River Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. The plan itself was really started back in 2020 with a group of the counties of Blue Earth, Fairville, Freehorn, Wasita, the counties and Minnesota conservation districts to start the planning effort. The plan itself was started drafting really in 2021 with the selection of ISG as a consultant to do the plan. And the plan, really the comprehensive watershed management plan, every watershed in Minnesota is required to have a plan by 2025, so this will be our second one. We have the Watton One Plan that was approved back in 2020, and the Los Sauer River watershed covers 48% of the county, some important parts of the county as well. So the public input process throughout 2021 and 2022 included online surveys, two public meetings, and then there was a steering team as well as technical advisory committee, and then the policy committee, which Commissioner Path is a member of. The plan itself went out for public review and the 60-day review back in December, and ISG is working on responding to a few of the comments, which were not major comments for changes to the plan. And a public hearing was held in Pemberton in March. Real quick about the plan itself, the priorities in the plan are water quality in rivers and streams, water quality in lakes, erosion, water quantity and flooding, wetlands, leadership, as well as bacteria in rivers and streams, and then riparian areas in shorelands, and then groundwater protection. In Blue Earth County, Lure Lake and Madison Lake are the two priority lakes in the plan for the county. The plan itself also includes several priorities that would be important to the county, including well sealing, shoreline restoration on lakes and rivers, as well as agricultural best management practices and watershore, which could be important parts of the agricultural community generally, as well as ditch management projects as well. The next step in the process is for the Los Sauer River One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee to submit the plan to the state, to the Board of Water and Soil Resources for their 90-day review. And then after that review, the county would then adopt the plan, which would replace the Blue Earth County Water Plan for water management goals and processes. So the plan itself promotes voluntary practices. It's not regulatory in nature, but it would replace the Blue Earth County Water Management Plan for the Los Sauer River portion of the county. The requested board action is a motion to submit the final draft of the watershed plan to the state Board of Water and Soil Resources for the 90-day review. And then the policy committee of the Los Sauer River One Watershed One Plan Board, they would submit that to the state. So the board action is a motion to support the submission of the plan for review.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
All involved, well.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
You can come right up here. We'll talk about a library board appointment.
Thanks, Board, for having me here today. I'm respectfully requesting you appoint Laura Stevens to the library board. Laura is an avid library user, and she's active in the community, and she's up to speed on what public libraries are doing in the area and the Midwest. And she has, her and I have had a number of conversations already, and she has some really good ideas. So I'm hoping that she'll approve the appointment.
All right. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
She's very good.
Yeah, she'd be very good.
Thank you.
I think a lot of us know Laura from her past. I've known her from many different committees that I've been on, including Children's Museum and a lot of, lot of, an amazing lady, and she's going to do a lot of positive things for Blue Earth County.
Yeah, thank you. That's good to hear. I'm new to the area, newish to the area, so, you know, I'm just getting to know her, and we're just having some great conversations. Great.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay. Negative ditch resolution. Good morning, Greg.
The subject is a resolution to advance capital funds to the ditch fund. Background, the following attachment is a resolution to advance capital funds to the ditch fund. This resolution is prepared annually by the Blue Earth County Finance Department for board action. Recommended action is the approval of the attached resolution for the advancements of $6,998,193.33 from the capital funds to the ditch funds to cover the deficit cash balances. This advance is to be repaid at a 7% interest.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Human Services.
Look at Angie.
Hi, Angie.
Morning, Angie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. I'm Angie Youngberg. I'm the Human Services Director of Business Operations, and I have for you today a report from Human Services. We have no action items for you this morning, but we do have three information and discussion items, excuse me, and they're all related to performance in certain areas of Human Services. The first report is regarding our child support program, and that program, that unit consists of 12 staff. Two longtime staff retired from this unit, and so this, this team has gone through multiple changes in the last year, and so the, you know, hope is to continue that the performance of the, of the team will continue at the high mark that it has been. And so you can see four of the federal measures that our unit is measured on. Paternity establishment, support order establishment, collection of current support, and collection of arrears. And basically, the summary of these is everything has held very consistent over the last many years. In many of these areas, we are well above the state of Minnesota target percentage of performance in those areas. And the collection of current support and collection of arrears has stayed very stable, which is consistent with our long history, as well as where we are at in terms of comparisons against other counties and the state as a whole. The program cost effectiveness, some of our programs can be measured on cost effectiveness of how much does it cost to do the work that we're doing and what is it actually producing for the community? And so for every dollar expended on the Blue Earth County Child Support Program, we collect $4.31 for children through child support payments. So that's a significant value, and it's a $1.40 higher effectiveness than the statewide average. So we're very proud of the work that we do for the children here in Blue Earth County. The next report is sharing with you a bit about the Human Services Billing Unit. So that was established in 2015, separating out the billing functions from our general accounting functions within Human Services. And that consists of one coordinator and two senior account clerks. And we are bringing in front of you today a picture of two different areas that the billing team works on. Although they do bill for over 15 different program areas, these are the two biggest. So targeted case management, which is essentially the social work services that are provided, case management services provided by many of our social work staff, as well as some of the claims within our mental health center, which is a significant volume. The, when you look at the year-to-date target or the actuals in comparison to the budget in targeted case management, we are significantly over our expected targets. So we have collected more than $600,000 over what we anticipated. And there's a couple of reasons for this. During COVID, we had a 6% increase in federal funding for some of these rates, and so that will be going away, so we'll be taking that into account for 2024. The other thing is, is that with some of our ability to collect data, we're able to look at what variables really influence this productivity, and so we have a project underway to recalculate the targets for 2024, the 2024 budget. And so hopefully, those numbers will be even closer. I mean, as we look at it, we're very proud of, of the work of, of all of these teams, yet we feel that we can be a little more focused in on getting closer targets. An interesting part of what happens within our billing unit is there's, you know, thousands and thousands of claims that go out, and less than 1% is denied. And being a former billing person earlier in my career, I can tell you that that's a significant achievement on the part of that team, that less than 1% of the claims come back denied, and they work, and they hand calculate and work every single claim to get every bit of insurance revenue that they can. So that is something that they're, they're quite proud of, and so are we. Going to the bottom of the page, the average number of claims for the mental health center, this just shows you some of the volume that goes through our mental health center. For 2022, per FTE, we have 52 claims per week going out, and that's, that's reflective of number of sessions that, that these clinicians are having with various clientele. There's a couple of reasons that it's gone down since 2019. Number one, if you can imagine, is COVID, and the impact to lots of ways that people have received healthcare. We also have advanced practice nurses on staff and no medical, or no medical doctor MD, so Dr. Farnsworth was on our staff, and so he was seeing a higher volume because of his medical doctor status. And the biggest impact, though, is that we are doing more and more urgent care, so if people have immediate needs, they can get in to see their clinicians on an urgent basis, and those appointments tend to be a little longer. And so it's higher quality care, and we're able to help prevent hospitalizations through our mental health center. So you'll see some of that change over time here. The, excuse me, the last report is the Behavioral Health Unit, and there's a couple of areas that we're focusing in and sharing with you today. So this team provides services for adults with serious and persistent mental illness, and they have seen an increase of over 44% in their caseloads in the last five years. And so when we talk about individuals with serious and persistent mental illness, these are adults that have obviously the most serious and longstanding forms of mental health, and so therefore, their needs are generally some of the highest that we see for those that we work with in the community. And so this increase is really about maintaining people on caseloads so that we can reduce the need for hospitalizations and long-term hospitalizations. And so this, this increase is something that we're continuing to watch and manage, and we've been managing it really with no staff increase during this period of time. Another part that that team works with is individuals that are in civil commitment, so it is when there's an event that is serious enough that warrants a doctor or provider in saying that, that they need to involuntarily seek treatment for their mental illness, chemical dependency development, immiscibility, or sexual dangerousness. And over the past five years, we've seen a 72% increase in this as well. And so these civil commitment screening requests really are of the highest acuity of those that are, you know, at immediate need of risk for, of safety for self or others. And so this is something that we are diving into in project form over a period of time here to see what can we do, both systemically and within our team, to help provide more community-based options for these individuals other than hospitalization, because we know that hospitalization options are very, very limited right now. Of these civil commitment screening outcomes, or screening requests in 2022, you can see the pie chart on the next page, which shows that 42% of them ended up in a full civil commitment screening, and 35% of them ended up in a state commitment. And so in either of those situations, we are continuing to work with the person over six months, sometimes up to 18 months, and working with them on services that are then involuntary in nature. And then at the bottom of the page, you'll see that there are multiple different types of commitments that are ordered, and these are the ones that we received a full commitment on, so the person was found to need those services in an involuntary way. And so the mentally ill and dangerous is always, one, even though it's represented by two, I would say, two individuals there, those types of cases take a lot of staff time and planning because of many, many, many of the complexities regarding those. So even though it shows a small number as two, I can tell you that that's a significant amount for us in one year to have. And then finally, as part of this report, we are sharing with you a snapshot of the Second Step Clubhouse, which you are familiar with as a community support program for adults with serious and persistent mental illness. It is located over at the Vine Building, and there are many highlights that we have of, of the program, most notably in our region. It is the clubhouse that is most, I would say, owned by the consumer members. So we actually have members that are involved with the planning, the decision-making, the groups, they're very, very involved, instead of staff being very focused as the one providing that. It's about being very inclusive for membership. And so these numbers you can see in terms of participation. We have continued, at the request of many participants, to continue Zoom or video connections to clubhouses versus coming in all of the time, and so that works well with people, and that's been feedback that we've gotten, that even though the clubhouse is a location, it's really not just a location, it's part, being part of a social network, and so that can be done virtually as well. And so that was continued by members as well. And so the clubhouse programs, we're celebrating the 34th year this year in May of the Second Step Clubhouse here in Blue Earth County. And really, again, this is another way that we in Blue Earth County help decrease social isolation and support for those who are needing mental health services. This is the report that I have for you this morning. Any questions?
As far as the clubhouse, are there, maybe an open house for a while? I don't know whether they're going to have something, maybe towards Christmas?
We generally have done open houses when possible in coordination with May as mental health month, so generally, we'll see May being a time that, that can happen. We have had open houses in coordination with other holiday events and things like that where we've invited the community to participate. We did step back from that during COVID, and so that is something that the membership is really looking at. Is that something that they want to, again, engage? And looking at some of the membership numbers, we did see a little bit of a dip with that through COVID, and so they are really actively planning on how do they want to continue to engage, engage others in the community. So, you know, if that's something that is, feedback that I, I would, I will absolutely share with them, if that's something that, you know, the board was interested in seeing.
Thank you. That's Angie.
Great.
Thank you very much. All right. And we jump right into administration, Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for April 4th. Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, on the bills. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. I just have informational items for the board today. We filled a number of positions, starting with the 911 telecommunicator in our sheriff's office, our dispatch center. We also have filled a number of waste and recycling technicians. These are positions that are associated with the county taking over the operations of the Ponderosa landfill. So you'll see items B, C, and D related to those positions. And we filled a property and environmental resources specialist position in our elections area. We also have filled a position, a social work position in our child and adult protection area. We also filled, again, another 911 telecommunicator. Then we had a promotion of a senior account clerk to accountant. This is a, a new position that the county board authorized without a backfill, and so a promotional opportunity within our existing staff. Then we had a promotion of a correctional officer to a social worker in our Yellow Line Project, a community-based coordinator. And so unfortunately, we created our own opening in the jail, which has been a challenge for us, but a nice promotional opportunity for that individual. So we've initiated recruitment to refill the correctional officer. Then we had completion of employment for a social worker in our Amen Choices Adult Services area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of our GIS and Technology Coordinator. And then we had another resignation of a social worker in our Children's Mental Health and Chemical Health area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And lastly, we had a resignation of a mechanic in our Public Works area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. That's what I have for Human Resources, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if the board has any on those items.
All right. Go ahead.
Item number nine in your packet then is a memo regarding appointment to our County Board of Appeal and Equalization. Both Mr. Mike Johnson and Ms. Kathy Fieldges have indicated an interest in being reappointed to the County Board of Appeal and Equalization, and so I'm recommending both of those individuals for a three-year terms expiring in 2026.
You need a motion for that?
I do.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Well, having worked with both of them, we're lucky to have them.
Yeah.
They're really good at, at that board of equalization.
All right. That's good to know. Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
Item number 10 in your packet then is a memo regarding Ponderosa Landfill Change Fund. As part of our takeover of the operations of the landfill operations, we do need to have cash available to handle different receipts that are received and making change as part of the state auditor's review of the county. There is a requirement that the county board officially establish a change fund, and so department staff are recommending a $600 change fund being appropriate for the level of transactions anticipated at the landfill, and so recommending authorization of the $600 change fund for the landfill.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Item number 11 in the packet are actually two gambling permits that are being requested by the Loyola Booster Club. One will be a Terrace View Golf Course, and the other one, I believe, is at Miniopa. And so these will be selling pull tabs and electronic gambling on those locations, and so as opposed to our typical gambling permits that come before the board where there's a date specific for like a Ducks Unlimited raffle or something, this will be more of an ongoing permit to have those on-premise sales of gambling.
Do these need to be separate?
I think since it's one applicant, I think we could do both together.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
We'll just make sure to note in the minutes that it's both locations. Item number 12 then is the financial status report for the end of March, so we're a quarter of the way through our fiscal year. You'll see our total revenues so far are $16.4 million compared to total expenses of just a hair over $24 million. So we're in that period of time where we are using fund balance to maintain our financial position. You know, from the sense of individual line items, we still see strong performance in our transportation sales tax. Our state and federal revenues are up a little bit from the prior year, but really right on target for the annual budget. On the expense side, we will continue to see in these budget reports that our personal services, our wages and benefits will probably slightly exceed our budget just because of some of the classification and compensation changes that were made late in 2022 that aren't reflected in our '23 budget. We'll continue to see our contract and fees line increase over time as we get into the summer construction season, but running a little bit below budget at this point. Jumping back up to the revenue side of the equation, the interest on investments look much better than they did last year at this time. Still, maybe not where we'd like them to be, but certainly reflective of some of the changes in the investment marketplace. Towards the bottom of the page then is the Enterprise Fund, which is the Ponderosa Landfill. You'll see the total revenues at the end of March were $905,000 compared to expenses of $628,000. This will be one of those years, though, where we do have sale construction that'll be starting probably next month, and so we are likely to see the expense side to be quite a bit higher in 2023 than what we would have seen last year. The second page then shows our cash and investment balances. Towards the top, you'll see our total available funds of $15.5 million compared to a six-month operating needs of $58.6, so we are dipping into that operating reserve a little bit. And our total county funds, a little bit further down the page, are at $118 million, down about $3 million from the prior year. That's what I have at this point, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on the financial status report.
Any questions? Okay. So I guess we will dip right into the commissioners' reports on committees. Yeah, let's see here. We will start with Mark.
Okay. Don't have a lot. Let's see, we had a department heads on April 5th. On April 12th, I had a MICA meeting. It was online. And of course, they just gave a rundown on some of the legislative stuff of interest and, or it's ever-evolving, as you know, very fluid at the legislature. And then April 13th, we did have our mayors and clerks, and that was a good meeting. It was kind of well-attended, and it was great to get out there again and have a kind of an almost, almost, but not quite full strength of all the cities there. So, basically includes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Kevin?
Since April 4th, board meeting, I was not at department heads because we had a JD9 and a JD10 redetermination of benefits hearings in New Ulm, so was there as a DICH authority. On the 6th, was Saltwater Conservation District meeting. On April 12th, I was invited to attend the Crystal Waters public meeting, board meeting. They've done a report through ISG, so they had a report back on that. Also attended mayors and clerks on the 13th, and then the 14th with some of the other commissioners. Participated in the elected officials reception up on campus of Minnesota State University in Mankato. Emails and calls have primarily been about the public workshop, by Wednesday, some driveway issues with that, and then MFS. So that concludes my report.
All right. Patty?
April 4th, I attended the GMG TDS reception, which was really well-attended, and then the department head on April 5th. I had SHAC training on April 6th. April 12th was Region 9, so that was my first big Region 9 meeting. April 13th was intergub with Mankato in the morning and mayors and clerks in the evening. 14th, the MSU with the students, which was interesting, and I'm really glad I went. And I hope they continue it.
What's that? What was that? On MSU?
Up at MSU with the student, you know, lack of a better term.
The student government.
Oh, you went to, oh, okay.
Yeah, they had elected something there for two hours, and so talked to them about what their issues were, and they wanted to know what ours were, so it was really...
They sought you out?
Yeah, they went to all of us. And I had the NACO Finance intergub call on the 17th.
All right. So after the board meeting, on the 4th, I had a NACO Membership Committee meeting, again, the TDS business after hours, and thank you, Patty, for showing up. It was a great event, a lot of fun. On the 5th, there was a department head meeting. On the 6th, I had a NACO Transportation Committee Zoom. On the 10th, I first met with Carrie over at IT to get my new business card on my phone, so that was interesting, and how we can just show off our phone as a business card. And then I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage meeting at 11, and then that same day, I had a law library meeting that turned into a telephone and email because they couldn't get their Zoom straightened out. Isn't that right, Pat? Anyway, on the 12th, I had a Blue Earth Nickle County Safe Roads meeting. On the 13th, the mayors and clerks down in Vernon Center, which we all showed up at. On the 14th, the Meacham Representatives event up at MSU, I met with Ann, our director at TDS, that same day on some issues. And then yesterday, I had a NACO Arts and Culture meeting. And that's the end of my report, and I can ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Not bad, 38 minutes, eh?